How does the town wish? About sixty to seventy percent of the total cost of the town, a person. So if you're to lose five million dollars, that's a lot of people. Those are human beings. That's the guy who picks up the recycling, we know on a first day basis. That's the police, that is the E and S guy who came to my home with my wife's health. That's the parks guy. I mean, even. These are people we die. Even worse, the reality is that many, especially the younger people, live in our community, there are names. Thirty-five, forty, fifty people who lose their job. What does it mean beyond that? What does it mean to you? How do you make up that move? Certainly stop, you know, retrenching for lots of jobs. But others will be committed in the library. Maybe you're in your trash, you want to pick up one seed. Maybe this kind of. You can go on and on and on. Reality is you can't take eighteen million dollars out of ninety-four, five, six million dollar budget and not be massive. Again, if that might be successful, down the road, it'll be all eighteen million dollars. So this is an issue for all of us. This speaks about like safety for our children. This talks about evidence and police coverage. Talks about recreation, and it talks about two hundred things. It talks about increasing our property taxes. And even if our property taxes, there are, we use a couple hundred dollars a year for some people. That's an evil extent, and it also speaks about the initiative of service. That's why it's important. Any questions? Yes. So, uh, we're repeating question. All fire has for the last six or seven years been fighting him to stop incorporation, and he's been very close to that. Certainly we've gotten the support of the board and the town board in the same process because they funded hundreds of thousands of dollars to the sub-division process. So let me talk a little bit about it. The petition process is part of New York State Village Law. And it was written by a very, very long time ago, it was a terrible petition. And it dictates a bunch of different steps that have to be taken in order to empower the new village. And there's so many movements that are unbelievable. You gotta have enough people. You understand, right now it's five hundred. You gotta get twenty percent of the total amount of people on the petition. Right now, they get a. Fourteen minutes. Petition signature. They have to boundaries that are reasonable, you're able to be a person which you prefer. And then you listen to people living in the building. That's it. They don't have to, you mean listen to Edmatt. Budget. They don't have to tell me what happened to us. They don't have to do any of this. So everybody in Edgemont walks into incorporation line. Everybody in Greenberg walks in unrepresented. As far as what's current, what's basically known as that, two laws. That is your question. There will be a new petition, the edge of incorporation, there'll be a new petition coming in the next weeks. When that occurs, there'll be another good debate. It doesn't need the guidelines. And it can be bound insufficient. And I'm assuming supervisor final will find this insufficient again. However, it's a very sophisticated, well-funded thing. And twice before, they run the Supreme Court, and there was the appellate. So why don't we get that a meaningful, smart people that determines much money that they need, that have actually decided it will be this time. Nobody is seeing the petition. Any questions about that?
However, really, we didn't set a shot at your problem that you said.
So in the first petition, it was a whole series of material things and boundaries. First petition, they used the Edgemont district as a boundary. In this second petition, they use Greenberg Fire District as a boundary. And in that case, it is considerable to impose some questions that are the exact decent bounds of the Greenberg Fire District, and they were overturning the appellate. We understand that it's just a rumor that now they're not using either the Edgemont District or the Greenberg Fire District. But they've gotten an engineer to go out and determine a brand new set of these towers. And they've established that this is what they want to build, which is their life. Again, nobody will know whether the petition is sufficient until that full review is in, and the town board is in the train with citizen devices. Any other question before it was? We got it to that.
Nothing said. Thank you. Thanks. But we've been working very well together, hasn't it? Okay, so I wanted to talk about the incorporation process. I just wanted to do a tighter timeframe when the Michael were in. First step is obtaining petitions from the people in the area that we're incorporating. They submit the petition to the town supervisor. Supervisor would then ask thirty days to hold a hearing to hear objections to the incorporation. And once the hearing is open, it must be concluded within ten days. If the supervisor determines that petition is sufficient within the ten days of opposing the hearing, he has to, um, let's see, they have to call for a. Now, let me mention though, once the supervisor makes a determination that petition is sufficient, an appeal can remain from the supervisor's decision. If he says it's not sufficient, then the petition will appeal. If he said it isn't sufficient, if he said it is sufficient, then someone else will appeal. That appeal process will go over. Once the court gets the petition, they have to have a hearing. Once they have the hearing, they have a twenty-sixty-one in ten days. The court, however, operates within a small timeframe. So it's not to say that that hearing would be held promptly, it would be on the fourth day. Once the court issued their decision, if it says that a referendum can be held, the vote that has to be held should be fifteen and twenty-five days. So the process can be as short as ninety days. But it can take much longer if appeals are made. Whereas the decision is there. Someone had asked last time, well, why is Greenberg incorporated? Incorporation is an attempt to provide services. Greenberg already has been served. So there is no need for unincorporated area to be incorporated. If it is not, however, it will block any future attempts by any section of town to move forward to the intention of operating, because then the town of Greenberg will be incorporated and not safe and public. So, next thing I wanted to say, well, which we feel is wrong, correct. First thing that we feel is wrong is that there is no consideration of the effect on the remaining portion of the town that could be outside of the incorporated area. If incorporation is detrimental to us, there is no way to make sure that our town will not. The second thing that we feel is wrong is that the entire population of the town is affected, but the entire town does not have a say. We have no vote in the matter, even though it significantly impact us. And we believe that that is undemocratic. So what is being done to try and change the process? We started organizing January this year. When I say we, I was asked all the members of the coalition who stand and raise their hands up, whether can recognize us. In the back we have Ron Joel Byer, the police support. In the front, who are right, we have a mission over president. We have Manning Redmond. We have Lloyd Port, Parkway Gordon. We have Lloyd Ullent, who's past president of the Board of Education. And Michael Schwartz from any one section could be already mentioned. And I would like to recognize, we're calling ladies, Amy Warner, who's a member of the Board of Education and the past president. And I want to recognize Susan Colton, who was the state. Okay, so we started organizing in January for the purpose of asking our state legislators to make a change in the law so that all Greenberg residents could be able to vote in a referendum. We believe that everyone who's affected by the proposed incorporation should be able to vote, not just those who are in Edgemont. We asked the town board to pass a resolution, asking the state legislators for a new rule to the village law to allow all alleged voters in the unincorporated town to vote in a referendum. And the resolution was passed by the town board on February the eighth. We reached out to our alleged faithful, Senator Andrew Stewart Cousins, and currently member of marriage in Shentucky in early February, asking to meet with them to present our case for making the change. We also asked the senior woman Amy Paulin, represents the Edgemont section of town, to meet with us, but she has failed to respond to our calls. Even though the request was made by one of her constituents. We were granted the audience seats with Senator Stewart Cousins and family Ron Shentucky at the end of February and early March, at which time we were informed that a study will be conducted on a case in the personal staff that is expected to be completed by the end of March. The study then used by the framework of crafting legislation that would interfere to the entire state. The end of March rolled around, we can't hear back yet. But we were patient because we knew that the legislature was that length in passage from the state. Once again, this year did not happen that time. We invited our legislative voices to speak at our community meeting that fell on basically instead, which they did. During that meeting, they pledged work on our tag. On May first, after the question was passed, we began to ask our legislators to meet for follow-up meetings and not giving them. However, on June fifth, the Senate bill was introduced by Senator Stewart Cousins and Senator Senator Paulin. On June seventh, passed through the local halls of our coalition members. The corresponding assembly bill was introduced by Assemblyman Fred Fields and refers to lower government's video. By the late date, or actually, bills were passed on the final day of legislative session. And they are now waiting to be sent to the governor signing into law. So what does the bill do? The new bill that has passed changes the requirement for the number of residents in the area to be incorporated. It used to be only five hundred, this number has been raised to two thousand. I should say that number will be raised to two thousand if the bill is signed. And a village incorporation commission would be appointed to oversee the process. Instead of the town supervisor reviewing petition, incorporation commission reviewing petition, see if it was legally efficient. This commission would perform fiscal analysis with Rockefeller Institute. And they would determine what are the effects of incorporation both on the town as well as the. The commission would have to complete their work within two years. And if the commission not think appropriate for the village to run, they have the power to say that this petition will not be incorporated. Now, that could be all right, for what it's there. Problem is, last ten lines of the bill specifically intended any petition that had been started before January. Specifically Edgemont, the ex. Therefore, bill has been asked by our legislators, we have the evidence which represents us, but not. That's going to affect unless signed by the governor and not by the governor, yet the signature. We don't know what the process should happen. Any question? The question was, who had the timely should fill that been sent to Edgemont from the law? I do not know the answer to that. That was a common process. How I just have one more thing that is part of the legal law. Do you have a final answer?
Okay, um, I just wanted to add one first thing that I think. Yes, I'm Susan Colton, and I am a professional assistant to the governor, leader, and where it's very very useful. One of the things that is most important that that the senator wanted to put in the law was a financial, a requirement for a financial impact to be done by individual body. Uh, in this case, the senator, uh, well, the rise in the vast bodies in the state budget so that the Rockefeller Institute could undertake a study to determine the financial impact of what incorporation would mean to the unincorporated area of Greenberg and to Edgemont. The senator is well aware of the problems and the financial situation that our committee has certainly brought to her attentions. The senators represent the entire town of Greenberg and believe that there must be information and informed electorate before any vote. There's been a lot of rhetoric back and forth as to how much taxes Edgemont would have to pay as a result. How much damage could be done to the unincorporated area of Greenberg if Edgemont incorporates? There's a lot of facts that I think. And there's no neutral body who's going to look at all of these facts and look at all of these costs. What Edgemont has been paying, what Edgemont has been contracting for, what they're not going to do, there's too much out there. So part of its law said that before any votes can be taken, there must be a financial impact thing created and that it would have to go before the public and make it be made public ninety days before any vote in place. The leader wants the process to be fair, to fair to everyone. And she feels that you must have the facts, Edgemont has to have the facts, Greenberg has to have the facts. So I think that's a very important part of the legislation that was approved by the Senate and the Assembly. And it was hardcore, but that's the story. And right now we hope that this now that's a state law. So what I'm saying is we want every, every village in the state and therefore every area to see that by one cooperating specifically for Greenberg and the Edgemont situation. That Rockefeller Institute has been engaged to do the study. We expect the financial effects that we expect that to be finished by the fall. And if this law is passed, even there's gonna be no vote at that even for ninety days. So that's where we are, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that it's an important part of the law to see how everyone will be.
There's, there's two hundred and thirty guys involved, right?
That's right. That's exactly right. The area that's the law now, that law has got changed. The area that must separate has the right to vote. I do want to point out one more thing. It's in Edgemont's interest as well as Greenberg's to have an informed electorate. There was several years back in an area in Long Island, Long Island. And that was happening in the state, it's in the Magic Beach track. Magic Beach wanted to be Magic Beach Village, and they incorporate. And six or seven years later, they de-incorporated, uh, basically, that's what we. Okay, so, so and because they found out that taxing the, in the unincorporated, in the, you're newly incorporated village is taxed with those who are. The services were not what they were supposed to be. There was the rush. So I just wanted to bring this out that it's in everybody's business to have a fact. And then you have another.
Who is the one that's inside that you thought?
I'm sorry? There's one.
This group of people that you're figuring out. And it's.
First of all, the commission that you were referring to in law does not, it does not take effect now. That, that part of the law, the commission does not take effect until twenty twenty. It has to, that's, there has to be a clarification and look on the chapter classifications that would determine anything people are, I don't have the law, honestly. I know, but it's, it's on, it's on an opening level, it's on a state level.
Mission in your boss and the commission will be. You have one point here. Your commission has a, the commission will be there. Um, one, one person, the attorney general, one who gets control, gets control, and one in the department of state. But right now, it's a balance of the past, you can't extend on this by, right? It is the law. I know, all is. So maybe, uh, what I'm saying, I have a significant. Really, we're talking about one protection if this is today. I mean, I wonder if we separately disagree with this motion. I'll explain mine. So what protection is today? None. Nothing is different today before and after the law. Because of the way the law is written and those headlines that exempt Edgemont from the requirements. Nothing changed. Edgemont was smart of, we're in a week, we're in two weeks. Anytime one, the governor signs the bill, which should have to be quite a while, except for the process. Edgemont goes through the process, just like they did first three times, no less than years, there's no prediction. As far as basically the studies are concerned, the section four two dash fifty-nine of Senator Congressman's law, and you might have heard of the book. Well, I may tell you the book, the law, but she presented the law, she divided the law, and Senator Cousins is replying to the law. That's clear. The section two dash fifty-nine, and that handles all of divisions. That then could be a commission that is to be made up of three people who are appointed by the control secretary of state and attorney general. What rights and responsibilities those people have. How are they going to spend that hundred thousand dollars on this Rockefeller Institute studying, say, about two years to determine, so that means it could be two years before further legislation is driven. However, the financial studies that would be done by the commission do not affect us because Edgemont is exempted from everything in this two dash fifty-nine section. A second law is absolutely useful. The second law by a senator's office allows for fiscal reporting. Why people in Edgemont doesn't give any, because reporting fights for responsibilities to the people in Greenberg, that it says that the people who are pretty have a possibility to visit with us, doesn't say their operational, doesn't say if they're physical, doesn't say if they're capital. Just that you can do it everywhere for them. It doesn't say who gets to look at them. Who gets to judge whether they're, they have any press. And in the event that they're no good for Greenberg, it doesn't happen. The commission has the right to determine if incorporation is dead or reworked, incorporated Greenberg or Edgemont. And say, hey, you can't go public petition. However, that specific area, which is smaller than H in the rest of the ones is also removed. So then we, we're working against the petition for years and years, years. And working with attorneys, but on base, they, the petition is efficient. Said at least we have some hope. Hope is that in January, February, March, six months, eight months, or a year from now, in the end that the petition is down to the institution, no good. Next final round. Edgemont would happen to be the same rules as the other twenty million people in the state of Greenberg. However, you could have watched it live on TV. Senator Paulin said that she has an agreement with Senator Cousins, I'm sorry, Senator Paulin said that she has an agreement with Senator Cousins who would pull the chapter of amendments that in January they're going to exempt Edgemont prospectively from that. So it's always whatever, it's pretty much the answer to the question.
Any amendments to the that have been passed by the Senate and the Assembly? Any chapter amendments will only serve to clarify what is currently in the law. It is not designed to change what is in the law now, but to please the clarity. I just wanted to make that. I just wanted to make that true. And, and, and as far as this study goes, and the ninety days. That the study has to go into the column, the financial effect study, that would have to be the main topic. That does apply to Edgemont and that, and that the column has to be whole. They aware of the study for ninety days, only for ninety days before the call. And it is hoped that the people in Edgemont as well will see how incorporation affects them. As well as the people in Rehberg. I'm, I'm really curious. In the letter that you got today, the leader has already seen the letter. Yes, ma'am. But there is a question specifically to you, which says, if this information is so critical, why is Edgemont exempted from the process? I don't understand why Edgemont is exempted from my country. If the, our colleagues, if the, if the process, if petitions started before July, January, or late February. Why would we exempt those petitions? You mean that? You mean the petition that the Fed or the Fed or I, because the leader, and he probably, I couldn't put it out this thoroughly, agree with this. Feels that this is the process that has already been started. And she doesn't, she's not going to change what is already been done. So this law is prospective and the fair is, and she hopes that once the study is completed. Everybody will have the necessary information for the call. It could turn out that when Edgemont reads and sees all of this information, that, you know, not everybody in Edgemont. Say, as you show, it's in favor of it. Everybody wants an opportunity in Edgemont for them to vote, but they need to be Edgemont voter. And they turn out after this financial impact statement is done to say, whoops, this isn't going to work. Yes, I, I should be a practical, you know, I'm trying to give you as much information as I have, but I just needed to clarify something. Do you, do you have a question? Look it straight ahead.
Especially what benefits and rewards that we get.
Well, you, you would have to, I, I can't, I can't answer that. I, 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 I'm in the time of Rehberg, in part sale of the same shirt at the Carol, now lives two twenty five years. And I was elected official in Rehberg and, you know, my heart's free bird. I don't need to tell you what Edgemont face are going to get out of this, if you can. Uh, I, I think I should. Now, that's Rehberg's vote, right? And it's. I guess I would look at historically in state law, that they, it's an area that wants to have something done. Has the right to determine their own self-determination. And that's, that's how things have worked for years, so we, uh, I, I don't, yeah.
No, I don't.
Okay.
I'm trying to suggest that everybody, on the New York State side, there is Bill seven five three seven. There's Bill seven five three seven, which is the bill that came from Senator Cousins. And looking at yourself, because if Edgemont goes and sends that petition tomorrow, which they can, there is no requirement for them to resent. Any fiscal material, because the law has been signed. You know that supervisor finer had called and asked if justice group is built, is second bill. Which only has the requirement of increasing the size of a new village. And fiscal material could be passed quickly so that Edgemont would be required to have a fund interest statement. But we're told that the process can allow that. So I have no way to know, but my expectation is, you're shaking your head, but Edgemont goes ahead tomorrow and sends a petition. There's no fiscal reporting requirement, but that's the law today.
I don't want to get into that, I'm trying to say that so we know this two hundred and five, so the majority today, the requests that led to the race to be attended the number of votes. So, and, and I've had it made.
And what I, I really have the experience that a lot of people care about this law and bill. That was, was a place for the paper and the best. And look at this, and we will agree again that the exemption of Edgemont because of the date of the petition without a purpose. And I just want to make one statement about that, and then we'll, we'll take two questions. The statement is that there are three different groups of people who are involved. It's the people who live in the unincorporated town of Rehberg. Need a vote and representation. People who live in Edgemont, like me, want to know what my services are, but the level is for my services. And how much they cost, and what my taxes are going to be before I vote. There's one other group of people, and those are the people who are forced to be in some corporation, that same group of people. So in this case, my perception is Carol's not going to be happy with me. My state legislature is failed because they didn't protect the unincorporated town of Rehberg. And they didn't protect the people who live in Edgemont. The only people who become happy here are the incorporators, who now can go forward and incorporate without any requirements. That'll come down in the next two weeks, I'm guessing. All will look at that petition, hopefully it will be the institution again, and in four to a year or two. And maybe if we all get together and we speak to our elected officials. We talk to our legislature, and make this group ten thousand. Maybe our elected officials will listen to this. How is, what's in the, your next?
This is Senator, excuse me, this is our meeting. Now, excuse me, excuse me. If you'd like to strengthen your views with the unity, we're welcome to organize a representative meeting. I'm not going to let you give the expression, I'm telling you. Uh, Ms. Boyd.
Uh, I, I would, I would, I would ask for today, you know, spread the news on the bottom. So I'm trying to explain this to somebody, the peer official. Last meeting, this gentleman, I heard that it was a city being done by a base in Brazil. So the same, this, the, the, the study came out, it's now public, it's been years. The study has a lot of things, which we, we, there's a lot. That coordinator should be the first side in the incorporation spread. That somebody's got to look to see whether or not people are incorporating Rehberg, which also be part of the petition process and the voting process. What type of fiscal works are done? And who determines whether they're correct? And who determines what the course will be of the, um, of the, of the process to determine whether the petition can vote forward? All of those things in that big study were intelligently utilized for a decent piece of legislation. That was presented by Senator Cousins. You know, if you need to be, your information, we leave, um, off, off trading anyone. I don't know if it's listed anywhere publicly, probably is full, we're conceiving. Yeah, let me see, you know what, let me, let me ask, um, this is fine, it's a pleasure. Maybe other questions? All of the things that were asked before should be directed. There's not many. Oh, no, no, just here, just. Three or four days. So we went to the basis for the legislation at the moment. On Edgemont, it's a direct request. Open community, and I, I certainly have a tendency to answer.
Yeah, um, I'll just, I think. Um, sure. I'm just going to email, I'm, 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 I'm sending for the twenty three years. I can see that I got six, better than the K on, and us, because it's our way to support the bar, be represented, people, I say. So we, and my team, they, they, they won both of them. And then we wouldn't pay them. Now, say they don't, they don't care, uh, uh. Those, those, they're represented, I'm sending people. They're represented, we, we hold them in, and they said, well, give me more, okay. So they don't care. Be ready, be that, uh, uh, this, this. So really quick, that number one, they're going to vote, they're, um, they're, 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 they're raises. Are about every time. They're both. They didn't even get a senate calls. Look after the city at all. You're starting. You're not going to be able to. So they're relying on the. You know. They drive a little bit so my thoughts. For you, they're controlled by that. They didn't get whoever they. And that personality has been smart. And we. Because we are going to demand our. So maybe by all of this. To talk at all. So it's part of that we know very important. United States. So it'll be. So if we serve and if. And that's that. It was definitely one of these. It was a lot of them have been better time is one of them. The other man is one of the five. They don't need to play if you want to be played. Well. They're talking about people in law. Who guys want to live on. So I'm glad that my day, I know this. I'm just saying, mine is a pretty wonderful thing. All the years.
Any other questions? Bishop will will close their eyes. Sure. Okay, here. Little radio walk, I live in the market, I'm waiting for it up. Um, and uh, we've had one school and uh, very good for that school. Uh, what was the one year? From seventy to fifty three, he's in the house, it's high, our major health. I haven't learned the people. For the assembly seat of this year in Congress was the lawyer before. And he quit and he was wanted by six to ten again, and I think I'll. God, we never. My view is that there is quite a surveyor. Now, Edgemont did. And he read it, as I said, on the basis of the boundary for hearing. Specifically between different features, boundaries, and foot forward in their positions of very clear. They may may locate five, this time. Third time because they're using today. Which they do. More than that, and sometimes not to the end of the month, they risk the death to stay at the table that we set in Ireland. My view is very close to what the uh, the. Uh, citizens. Um. They have a candidate for that. There is a very. Um, bad. The. They did not do that. Is desire to be more. People that have some question. The desire. But hey, that's definitely uh, it hints the honor of critiquing files completely problems. Do you want to put the old thing, third, yeah, ours and the third of it. And uh, the assassination and all that, the bad, the greater dating. The opposite, either the most question was, I think it's correct that it is. The desire to keep their own son and their own house, they. Uh, citizens, not as a town, because the town is by the. Sorry, it's all. And still doesn't belong to them. So everything is controlled and was handled. This is my opinion. Most important. Uh, what I thought this, I think that. Their economy is. I didn't get it. I mean, it's the Republicans. Help the legislative for bill with. Uh, which is uh, well, it's fully uncoordinated. As well as then. So we didn't get through in time. Now he's not there. But that's still should be an intent. The fine view movement. And uh, there is one path for them to grow, while that's the key. I'm very glad that this meeting, other groups, the line. They hold down here. Now. They said. Certainly, I think though, I was just mentioning this fact. Not as a data to promote the fleet as a volunteer. Working on the decisions. The position then. Didn't work and ended with the plan. Having a desert petition for the term. Let me just make one more point. Um. Everybody should go on any of our state website. Legislature. I just said the thing. They break down seven five three seven. Be less than nine. Of this very, very long. There is still a small number of people. And I would. Definitely this culture. Um, and this is probably speaking very loud while listening to everyone. But if it tomorrow. Senator Cousins, Roy. Not for the people, people still. Should not. Uh, in the in the bill. Requires that the people in Edgemont present some financial. Material with their position, that's all what they can take that bill. To be signed by the government. And then. During the process. While court cases and appeal and all things that we put down below. They still would be trying. Senator Cousins to determine anything like that. Ensure that. If this petition is found suspicious, that any future. That's in cooperation by anybody. In the town of Cleveland. Would have requirements. And would be decided by a group of people who were impartial. And able to look at the facts and determine whether or not it should be like that or not. That is in within. Senator Cousins. Power. Two simple steps. She chose to do that. Her vital knowledge letter. Thank you for everything, as opposed to learning that. Um, that this culture connection before. Um, I'm going to acknowledge who's. Um, Bishop Preston. Who is the pastor of. And in therapy, and these people are not for stuff. Thank everybody for telling me. And thank you for your intelligent questions. Um, again. We need to be in this together.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It's not that we're church. Uh. Let me personally thank you to the all speakers, my fellow speakers that are presenting tonight. Because I think they presented the presentation and were vital. Um, and I'm going to try to remember, he just. It seemed to work with us. Um, people have made some made some statements tonight that's very helpful. He's actually. So. Uh, to help us out, people, this is going to take it. This is going to take it better. Uh, question. What do you use this? Everybody agreed that this is twenty twenty. And why are we using? A law that was written. Possibly forty fifty years ago. To regulate and operate. General next question. Is there? Any relation home? With this? I'm crazy if you vote on this thing. Yes, because I was in the parliament. When I was last. I was supervised so bizarre. For over thirty. Whether. You might not remember that. When we were slated to build in the villages and inspiring town, seven hundred and fifty. Or the units for. Now, though, it's asking us again. We don't separate. They would be new ones. So we need to look at that. We're not going to think about what we're doing. If my next question, what came out? First thing you need to know, all those legislators, all these representatives. Get on them. Speak to them. On board them. Their own is always on and always listening. Even if you don't get a message, leave a message, let them know what you are concerned, tell them that you expect them to work. And of you and our community, not on the behalf of their personal benefits. They represent. We voted them in, and we can vote them. Happy. Next question. And in terms of cousins, who I love dearly, you're with her. And many occasions, and other people have called me next. Well, if Edgemont want to do this. And it's the law. What's wrong with it? Don't you want? If I don't want to be on a green bird. And I need to vote this. My answer is. No. If it. Suppresses anybody else's vote. Give me to them. If it suppresses anyone's vote, it should not be. Just because it's the law does not mean that it's right. This law was written against black people, against the village, and you're still operating by it. We need to tell them to change the law. Bill does not change the law. It does not answer the question. And you're in the criticism that we don't have a right to vote in one of the exits. That is both suppression and if it goes through, it will be separatism. That's be real. That's what we want. Not only that, I tell them that even though this bill gave consideration for our decent thoughts. But it doesn't. You don't have to leave equally. Speak to her means. We need each other. We are better together. Everybody agree. We are better together. And we need to stand here, give you a legislature statement, uh, you you respect it, Dan, and you expect it. Because the leads are. I'm a woman concerned as a priority. Don't keep pushing this back. This is urgent. And as the bill that is before the governor now, it's going to be sent to the governor. Now, if if it really don't get to push it, you know. Who gets the vote? Who was represented? Who was disenfranchised? Who's? Who's uh? Who obviously was. I'm 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 saying, I'm telling you more, you must. We're doing suppression of our. Everybody thinks. In your two thousand, we feel suppressed, I suppose. Nothing, maybe it's all for that. And we also kind of concerned. Uh, and don't be afraid to. Don't be afraid to get involved. We are here, invite you to come at us, invite you to stand with us. And that's beautiful. And 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 actually, tonight, I'm not closing, actually, tonight, I'll just give you an information that if you would like to know. What uh, Edgemont is really seeing in their petition, there is a website. My friend is there. Edgemont wanted to agree not all. You not what they are actually. Right, uh, putting putting together that's the issue. They have. Yeah, uh, this is a theme of the world. And it's important, be involved, be advised, and be educated, let's educate each other. You know, your neighbors, tell your friends, you know, everybody, you see. Something is wrong in the kitchen. It's clean kitchen. Changing the law. This law must be changed, not a bill going up for the government. It has nothing to do with the change in the law. The law needs to be changed because we are in a country of industry. We are not slaves. The law is written against slave. And you still use it. Why are we still using something invented by? And we all need to have the same opportunity, benefit. So so tonight, I want to say thank you on the hand of the commission. I want to say thank you to all of you that come out. Uh, this time, there will be further meetings and further gatherings for this. If you would like to be part of this mission, we still rely on what you have. Because tonight, our people have a vital mission to help us to structure. This uh, our petition to the state that we can get this law changed, not just the bill that satisfies. Ten more bases, but we need to promote launching to that law can be changed. Will will no more than two words. We looked at the law. They have one law, it can be changed in those two words, everybody can help. Thank you, God bless you, and that's for here. Make sure and you treat people with compassion.